Call the planning commission.
Probably not. Is it now? Okay, do the pledge of allegiance, Liam, could you lead us, please? Your pledge? Sure.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the plan.
You can't hear us?
I can hear you now.
Oh, you can hear me now. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, I think I jumped out over there anyway and forgot to ask for the roll call. Uh, Jenna, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Mueller.
Do the doctor action.
Uh, Chair Mueller?
Here.
Commissioners Tonda? Habib? Johnny? Blake? Wilson? And Kumar. If I may also declare the posting?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code section five four nine five four point two. And just for the record, Commissioner Habib, uh, um, did Alice said he was not going to be here tonight. He's not feeling well.
I think both of, both called in.
Okay.
The both are excused. Um, okay, public comment. Members of the public are entitled to address the planning commission concerning any item within the Morgan Hill Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The planning commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item, not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay. Do we have anybody wishing to speak to us on a non-adjourned item?
I think so. I'd like to remind the audience today, if you're joining us using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're dialing in, you can dial star nine and then dial star six to speak. You may also send us an email at PC public comment at morganhill.ca.gov. Each speaker will receive three minutes. If you wish to speak on behalf of someone else, you will receive one additional minute per speaker. If you are speaking maybe on the behalf of four or more people, your comments will be limited to a total of seven minutes. Please make sure to state each person's name for the record. Thank you.
Okay, uh, orders of the day. Is there anybody wishing to change the one made item? Being no one will take the orders as they were given to us. Uh, consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull an item on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Okay. It up a little bit. Okay.
Move approval.
Move approval. Do I have a second? A motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we don't have any public hearings. We do have one other business was, which is a conceptual review and study session for Butterfield Evergreen Raising Canes. Okay, uh, staff report?
Good evening, Council, uh, planning commissioners, the same council members. Um, so we had a request from Raising Canes and Evergreen Village, Evergreen Development, um, to come and talk about some potential development um, options for a future raising canes. Um, they're not quite ready to file for a CUP, but they wanted to get preliminary comments from the planning commission on certain aspects of the site and how they're thinking of treating it. So we wanted to bring you in today, um, just reminding you that this is the overall PD master plan. It was approved in 2018, and I'm using the graphics that were submitted by the applicant. Um, they may have additional materials that they want to show you as part of their comment. Um, so this is at the corner of Betterfield and Jarvis. Um, what was approved during the 2018 were two separate parcels with shops, buildings, um, and a public plaza. The public plaza was part of the, um, public benefit. It was one of two plazas. The second one would be next to the grocery store that was envisioned for the middle of the site. Um, so those two items really served as the public benefit. Um, this particular site layout that they've developed for, um, the potential canes has incorporated a plaza. And they've gone through a few different iterations of a site plan, and they wanted to bring this one to you to get your opinions on the layout, the look, the overall, um, sort of orientation, still having that pedestrian connection into the site, the use of the plaza. Um, and the plaza was always meant to draw pedestrians into the site and allow seating for customers and the general public. But the rest of the, um, site plan is still up for comment from, from the team. Um, so it may change by the time if, if the applicant chooses to move forward with an application. And this is another rendering of what the plaza could look like. Incorporating the drive-through, and this drive-through will follow the, the new, um, model of drive-throughs with a dual lane. Um, it allows for additional stacking. It eliminates a lot of queuing problems that we do see in our current, um, drive-throughs. And it is, does seem to be the new model that we're seeing in most new facilities being installed in different cities. So the above, um, graphic is the rendering that was presented during the discussions on Evergreen Village. And below is what it would look like in the same location, um, with Kane's proposal. And then there's another graphic from on high, seeing how it would look if you were flying a drone or something else in that area. Um, so we're here tonight to really talk with the applicant. Um, the planning commission should review the proposed redesign and consider whether or not it meets the intent of the public benefit identified in the PD. Whether it maintains appropriate site circulation and connectivity with the rest of the shopping center, adjoining residential across the street and other commercial uses. Um, as I said before, should the applicant choose to move forward after tonight's discussion, the next step would be an application for a conditional use permit and the subsequent sequen analysis that goes with that. And that was all I had for you this evening. Representatives from both Canes and Evergreen Village are here. Um, and I'm sure that they would like to speak with all of you. I will leave it there and open it up, or Chair, if you would like to do that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions to staff before we start?
I don't have some, but I was, I'm gonna maybe wait until you do. Do I do public comment first and listen to the applicant? Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, you had a question about the CUP, would that be becoming, uh, back for the commission?
If the applicant chooses to file for one, that comes back to the commission, yes.
And, and, uh, is it on the corner of, because it says like Cochran and?
I said Betterfield and Jarvis, didn't I? It's Betterfield and Cochran. My apologies. Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's open up public comment then. Uh, Jenna, could you remind everybody?
Thank you, Chair Mueller. Feel free to send us an email at PC public comment at morganhill.ca.gov. If you're joining us through using Zoom, feel free to use the raised hand feature. If you're calling in by phone, dial star nine and then dial star six.
And Chair, as this is a study session, it's a little more casual. Um, and so the public may want to comment about the applicant. I've told them if they want to sit in the chairs and have a conversation, um, that would be appropriate. And our academic development team is also here if you have questions, I've done as well.
But sure, I have no problem with him moving forward and having a little bit more of a discussion environment. Whoever's appropriate from Evergreens and applicant, please identify yourself.
Hello, I want to thank all the commissioners here and thank you for taking time on, uh, Valentine's Day. I know we all have other commitments, but we appreciate you guys listening to what we have to say. Um, I am Rod Collins with, um, Evergreen Development, and this is Jay Higgins, uh, with, who's a consultant for Raising Canes. Um, I guess what I want to say is back four years ago, I think when we got this, uh, PD approved. I think that a lot of it was conceptual and, and done with a lot of the feedback from the commissioners and from city council. Um, on the corner, uh, we had the plaza, which was, you know, the intent, I think, was to provide a gateway into the center that connected with the community, that provided a connection not only with the, um, the apartments across the way, but just kind of an entrance into the thing that kind of we, um, activated the center in some ways. We had, the idea was to have restaurants that, um, had umbrellas and seating out there that could provide, like I say, a gateway to the community. And, you know, a lot has changed in, uh, the world in the last four years. And, um, especially with retail, and I think that we all have hoped that retail would bounce back better than it has. And unfortunately, um, we haven't had a lot of success, uh, in our standpoint as far, as far as finding retailers to come and backfill the property. I think we were, uh, meeting with you guys a couple of months ago, uh, and had floated the idea of the residential component in the back. Uh, letting you know that we just haven't had the retail interest that we all hoped we would. Um, when I think when we thought about designing the hard corner with the shop building, that was assuming we were going to get some anchor tenants in the rear like a, um, a supermarket, and, uh, we haven't had any success with that, unfortunately. And so we have struggled a little bit with what we were going to do with the hard corner. And, um, when Raising Canes came to the market and we're doing a couple of deals with them in other markets, what we've experienced with a lot of cities is they would say to us, hey, is there a chance of getting Raising Canes or Chick-fil-A in our city? And so when they came, uh, our initial thought was, gosh, we'd love to be able to accommodate you here. Um, but, um, not sure where we want to put you. We know we have the, the requirement for the plaza. And they were very adamant from the very beginning, if they were going to go in our property, and I think they had identified our property as their number one, uh, spot in the city that they wanted to go. They needed to be on the hard corner. So, uh, to their credit, we have worked with them and told them about the, um, desire to have a plaza on the corner and something that can activate the corner. And we're actually really excited with what they've come up with because I think it is a tenant that candidly right now is one of the hot tenants in the retail market in any city that you go to. They're very community driven. Uh, they are big with, uh, the high schools, uh, and a big community, uh, component to what's going on. Uh, they'll design their building. I think one of the things on their thing, and he can talk, Jay can talk about it, is I went there and put Morgan Hill on there. Um, but they've gone out of their way to really work with the city on the, um, the plaza area to incorporate that into what they're doing. And I've been really impressed with what they did to emulate what the intent was and what we were trying to accomplish from the very beginning. And I don't know that there are any tenants out there in the market that can activate a shopping center like Raising Canes. So, uh, not to mention the tax dollars that they bring in, but we're really excited on what they offer to our center and give us the chance to maybe get other retail behind it, because right now we don't have any momentum in what we're doing behind the thing. And so I think that, uh, Raising Canes would be a great addition, not only to the community, but certainly to this project. And I think what they've, what they're proposing is what we were really looking for, and I think, uh, kind of goes with the intent of what I think we were trying to accomplish in the corner of activating it and providing a gateway to the center. And so I'll, at this point, just kind of turn it over to Jay and let him talk about, um, you know, what they're proposing and and let you guys answer and ask any questions you want.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, um, my name's Jay Higgins. I'm a consultant for Raising Canes. Um, and, um, Raising Canes is expanding big time, in particular in California. Their private company, um, was born, they were born out of, uh, and, um, a need to fill in Louisiana, uh, for, um, uh, quick serve food, and it took off, gained in popularity. Now they're headquartered in Dallas. And we are probably around seven hundred and fifty restaurants right now that are open in the country. And, um, I'm handling about, I don't know, a couple dozen, um, between here and northern part of the Bay Area. Um, so it's, it's a big push. Uh, we are going through a lot of different entitlement procedures in a lot of different cities. But when we approached Ms. Carmen, uh, with a, with a site plan and we get some due diligence done, she suggested, you know, this, this one has a particular, um, entitlement designed that you may want to pay attention to and get some feedback from the planning commission on. Um, and understanding of the intent of the, of the entitlement is to open up the corner and be a bit of a gateway into the shopping center, uh, to those people that are, uh, that live in the, in the newer apartments or condos around of the city. And so, uh, while the majority of our traffic is, uh, drive-through traffic, um, and that's, that's up and down with, with how people are reacting to certain pandemic, um, uh, alerts, I would say, but, um, it's, it's raining a little bit, but, uh, so say in 2018, 19, um, seventy or eighty percent of the traffic was, was drive-through only. But now we're closer to sixty percent, forty percent walk-in. And, um, you have, um, every site's different, and this one has, um, a real strong corner aesthetic that already came with, uh, an entryway in the, in the, in the, um, in the design. Um, and we're not interfering with that. We're essentially taking what was the plaza in a, in a rectangular shape and moving it to better accommodate, um, restaurant seating, uh, additional patio seating. So it's basically the same square footage, just oriented differently. Uh, we think that, that provides a very strong visual connection from people that are walking or driving up and down the street into the property. And they'll see a lot of people sitting and dining. Um, and that's, that's essentially a public benefit in our eyes. But Ms. Carmen, um, advised that we, we, um, ask that question, whether or not you agree with that, that, um, uh, level of creativity with regard to the pedestrian, the public benefit and the pedestrian connection. So that's, that's what we're here to hear from you on. Um, we have, um, our civil engineer, Nina Curry is here as well. And we can talk to you about other things that, if you'd like, um, how we ordinarily apply for a permit, what our typical, uh, requirements are under SEQA for traffic analysis and queuing and stacking programs so that we mitigate traffic um, and don't spill in the street. There is a honeymoon period associated with our, our, our restaurants when we open, very popular for a number of months, and then traffic dies down. Uh, we do everything we can in those honeymoon, um, months to bring more staff into the street, handheld tablets, hire off-duty police officers to control traffic. Um, and, but we don't see that as a big concern here because of how much extra area there is in the shopping center for queuing. Um, but we can, um, address any other questions you might have about the architecture, uh, or about our operations or whatever, whatever, uh, you might come up with.
Okay.
I think if I may, um, the best exhibit is the, is the rendering, uh, the 3D rendering that you had up at the end. That, that probably provides the most amount of, uh, architectural detail. Um, and we can go from there if you'd like. Yeah, that's probably good. Right there. That's a good one. Our, our vision for this is to expand, essentially taking two parcels of two buildings, merging the parcels. So you've got one parcel and only one building, but the same amount of square footage for, uh, pedestrian seating and patio seating. We ordinarily have, uh, outdoor seating associated with restaurants anyway, and here we are preparing it. Um, it's a, it's a, um, still at a Mediterranean climate that will get, uh, restaurant visitors year-round, maybe not at nighttime in the wintertime, but definitely in the daytime. So we think it's a, it's a, it's an attractive entrance, and it also provides a destination as well. The previous entitlement had an entrance, sort of an invitation, but it, it didn't necessarily drop people to a destination other than through the back of the parking lot, maybe to the, the shopping center or the grocery store. But this keeps that. There's still pedestrian connectivity to the balance of the shopping center, but this provides a, a great opportunity just for an immediate destination to sit and eat. They don't have to buy the product. They can sit and hang out on the tables and, uh, but we certainly hope that they do.
Questions? I, I do. Sorry about that. Um, so the tables, I, I think that's a great design feature, but it looks like the, um, customers will have to walk through the drive-through lane across it to get to them. Is that a concern?
We have that everywhere we go.
Okay.
And we can treat, see, right, right here, you'll, you'll have two pedestrian connections, one at the corner and one further down Butterfield. Uh, either one would cross through the drive-through lanes, but we treat those areas differently with raised or stamped concrete um, and a lot of signage and a lot of paint so that everybody knows. And we are, when we're active with a lot of, uh, traffic, we have crews out in the parking lot and in the queues.
And Jay, really, I think the pickup window is on the north side of the building.
Right.
And so the pedestrian, the main pedestrian route is, is in the drive-through, but it's past the pickup window.
Right. Can we go to the site plan for a moment? So it looks like there's only one access to get into the parking lot? Is that correct on the south side?
Correct.
Is it possible to make, uh, reduce that island? Because I could see that's going to be a bottleneck.
Yes.
Is, I'm wondering if that's.
So are you, are you suggesting that we did, we, maybe, um, Ms. Carmen could elaborate, and Nina's gonna catch me before I fall here, but, uh, we did have some preliminary comments from the city's public works department that we did accommodate, and that's reflected here.
Okay.
But, um, those kinds of things are, are easy for us to amend.
Commissioner Wilson, when you say the island, are you referring to the island of parking?
Yeah, the south side, the very edge of the, there's that access road that goes behind the restaurant. See that island? I mean, I don't know how wide the drive is, probably what, twenty feet?
So should, should the application move forward and do a CUP, there will be full-scale review. Um, a fire department will be concerned about traversing the parking lot, ecology for accessing the trash enclosure, and engineering will do another review, making sure access works.
Okay.
Um, okay. Liam?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, excuse me, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, reiterate that we actually do take into consideration the code. But as Jennifer mentioned, um, fire, uh, fire access and emergency access, and also the canes delivery truck access is how we designed the widths of the driveway. Um, also, we take into consideration the direction of vehicles heading towards the drive-through queue, making sure they're not blocking any traffic, any emergency resources. Actually, we did have, the initial iteration had another entrance on, right near the drive-through entrance, but it was under the advisement of some of the public works comment that we kind of closed that off, kind of contain all of our queue on that side of the site.
Okay, Liam?
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, guys, how are you? Also, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Nina. I'm a Timely Horn, we're the civil engineers for Raising Canes.
Nina?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm coming. So, uh, yeah, I, I did actually read the, the, um, staff report as well, uh, this afternoon. So my feedback's going to be a little generic, so it doesn't really matter if it's a canes sticker, you know, logo on the building or a Chick-fil-A, dare I say, or, uh, I prefer your chicken, by the way, but, uh, but I think my feedback is more based on a very high-volume, high-traffic type of business, because that's essentially what you have, right, is, you know, it's extremely popular, right, we, you know, a very recognizable name, but it's also, I think even by your own drawings, you're designing this for a very high volume of traffic. Right? I think that's the nature of your business. As you said, that's the nature of how people are these days. They prefer to drive through than maybe go into a restaurant. That's just how things are. But I think if I recall back, when we had the initial discussions about this concept of this, this corner and to activate that corner, I think as a commission, we were kind of saying, yeah, we're not the people investing here, right? You know, you are, right? You've got to make it work out, but I'm just giving you some feedback. Is that, the idea was we were trying to avoid what we call the old-school, um, uh, commercial centers. Lots of concrete, lots of parking spaces, lots of buildings, not a whole lot, not a whole lot else to do, right? And the idea was to, in, in the original thought process was, this might be a corner, which is very visible. It might have maybe a store or a restaurant or a coffee shop or a bunch of things where you would get a lot of activity. You create that sort of sense of community where you can go in and just kind of hang out, right? I, I must commend and say, you've made an attempt here. I mean, I know this is an early discussion, you made an attempt to try and maintain that. I just don't see the same thing. Right? And I think really because, one, it's a little more condensed, but two, it's surrounded by traffic. Like, unless, if you're asking for feedback, I'm giving it to you, which is, I think there's going to be a very high volume of traffic here, which might distract people from actually going in and hanging out around here, because somebody made a comment earlier, you have to navigate your way around the traffic to go anywhere. Right? And that's not to say that you haven't made an attempt here in these initial drawings to try and keep that active space. And one of the big, if I recall, Jen, this is one of the benefits was to create, right, and one of the reasons we kind of approved on this was to get that type of a benefit. And one of the questions I saw in the staff report was, do I feel like we're maintaining that benefit? And if I was to be brutally honest, no, I don't. Right? Is it a deal breaker? Maybe not, but I'm not seeing the same thing. And it's primarily for me, like I said, I'm, 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 I'm a big fan of myself of business and bringing more business to the city. So again, it's not a canes thing, or it's not a, it's just that I'm, I've been, I was, as a commissioner, I've been asked the question, I think we're maintaining the same spirit of what we originally thought, and I think the answer for me is no, we're not. Right? Could we do something about it? Possibly. Right? Um, and the main thing for me is, I've been to Canes and I've, you know, into Chick-fil-A, into In-N-Out Burger. You're gonna have, I mean, your business model is a lot of traffic. A lot more traffic that you might even be able to cater for at times, depending on the time of day and weekends and stuff, if it even spill out into the, into the rest of the development, which I know you're going to try and maintain. But for me, that means the best streams that we've been trying to attract them there, I think they're going to get a little landlocked, in my opinion. Right? That's my initial feedback.
Uh, a couple of comments and maybe a question or two. Uh, the first is, uh, and, uh, you know, actually, I mentioned the, uh, uh, the establishment that I uh, immediately thought of when I saw the proposal. And I haven't had the pleasure of going to a Raising Canes before. I, I look forward to it. I, I guess this has got to be something special.
Stuff.
But it, this really reminds me of In-N-Out Burger. In fact, the layout is very similar to In-N-Out Burger, just right down the street. And so a question about that, I saw in the report that you would expect about fifteen hundred clients on an average day. That's lots. Um, about one client per minute would get processed over the entire day is, is, that's the first one. And, and, uh, I really questioned it until I thought about In-N-Out Burger, and that's about what they do. I've never seen that place not filled. So is, is that a realistic expectation to about fifteen hundred clients a day, a day?
Well, at this point, I'll just have to say, yes, that's, that's our, that's our estimate. Uh, when we submit for the CUP and really dig into what the market demand is, is here, we'll feed that information through our traffic analysis. Um, and it will be based on how other canes are performing in the area. Uh, in terms of In-N-Out, In-N-Out is sort of an anomaly in the traffic world. They don't, nobody believes that the Institute of Traffic, Transportation Engineers, uh, statistics apply to In-N-Out um, the way they would apply to a regular retail building. So we take this, a similar approach in that we measure what other canes in the region are doing. And then we establish what the queue would need to be for that kind of volume. What we're different than In-N-Out and the others is that we have a focused menu. It's chicken and fries and literally, um, when they told me this, I didn't believe it, but I've seen it happen, literally. When people in the, in the crew see a car pull into the, uh, parking lot, they drop, they call it dropping bird. They call it dropping bird. So the chicken goes into the fry because there's only one thing a customer can order. And that's chicken. And so our our queue durations are the best in the nation because there's only one thing that somebody could order. They're less than two and a half minutes from the time you get to the drive-through uh order window to the the pickup window. So we can handle the volume. And Ms. Carmen mentioned that that the uh dual lane is a bit of a of a new uh feature in drive-throughs and and in some places will will start with three lanes and have two primary lanes and then a um a lane, a bypass lane for people to get out of the line so they can get their um uh order, if if there's an order in front of them, they can get out of it, and that helps the queue as well. Um, if your concern is, I I'm not clear on if your concern is related to the site plan or the functionality of.
Oh, well, I'll get to that. I was just trying to ensure that I understood what the facility would probably look like. And it's not going to look like a, uh, you know, a Denny's, obviously. It's gonna look like a Burger King, that type of volume and that type of speed. In fact, again, the the layout is very similar in the parking. In fact, it's almost exactly the, well, it's very similar. Um, okay, I understand that then. So the the second thing I had would be the service hours. Um, uh, when will the facility, what are the operating hours of the facility?
Uh, we like to open at nine thirty in the morning and run at least until one thirty in the morning.
Wow, one thirty AM?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't serve breakfast. Um, we don't serve alcohol, uh, but we do open relatively early. And a lot of our customers are um people that work hot hours, a lot of emergency service uh folks. Um, it just really runs a gamut. So there's there's business in in a case parking lot all day long. So your your comment about volume, it is spread out fairly evenly for fifteen hours or so, or eighteen hours a day.
All right. And that gets me then to, uh, the biggest concern I had would be, let's just go to the success of the building. There would be some impact on the homes across the street, which are, they're not apartments. Those are uh multiple family dwelling units. Okay, so their owner occupied.
No.
They they are apartments then.
Yeah, they're directly across the street on Cochran is the original affordable housing project. It was built there for a particular reason.
Okay. And be that as it may, there's still uh Morgan Hill residents. So my concern would be the uh impact, and I know this would be uh reviewed carefully in uh projects middle of the noise and the lighting impact. And so I I I thought I saw a possible solution to the noise. And if you could be so kind as to bring up the uh rendering, uh, any of the actual renderings, it it shows what it would have, well, except that one. It's that one. That's a good one. Uh, I'm, I was speculating, maybe I'm wrong, that those uh posts are holding up that essentially are glass-like panels? Or are they, because that would, that would help mitigate the uh coverage and the noise otherwise?
Right. Conceptually, they're actually like LED Christmas light stream. It's just a light stream. Uh, but as far as the design for the lights in the parking lot lights, they're actually specifically um designed to mitigate any noise, excuse me, uh, light pollution with LED lights. Um, obviously to meet the 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 recent building code, but also to be in in consideration of the neighbors. As far as the noise pollution, um, we actually tempered the volume of the drive-through um menus. And actually, on this design, the drive-through order boards and speakers are on the other side of the building, side that we can't see. Um, so what you're gonna be, as far as noise, um, what you're gonna actually be saying as far as taking orders are gonna be on the other side. They do have employees that'll be walking. If you look in the drive-through, there's a striped walkway. They'll have um employees with tablets taking orders. Obviously, they're not on speakers, so they'll just be person to person. Uh, but we do take into consideration the noise pollution and light pollution in this case, which are also analyzed in the SEQA.
That's correct. Um, well, I was just thinking that uh the area, your design is great in uh for many, many reasons. But one is because the uh auto bills are pushed back in the street. And therefore, there's a uh a distance or a physical buckle. However, if landscaping could be added as well in what you show as uh green area, um, that I think would be something that really should be looked at, try to mitigate headlights a- as well as any kind of uh spillover noise pollution uh as much as possible. Uh, that would be input, I suppose. Uh, the other one is the plaza area. You know, I see the plaza area as a circle, well, as an area with a painted circle or so. Uh, and I'm sure it's just conceptual. It's gonna look maybe different, maybe quite different. Um, but if that plaza is to be active, is to draw somehow people there to sit on a corner, uh, at a minimum, uh, in Morgan Hill, if you're not familiar, Morgan Hill is awfully hot. And you you need a cover. So it could be even more inviting if you had like that little roof of some sort. Um, and that would also hold true in the event that somebody wanted to uh eat or 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 hop out there when it's raining, which doesn't occur that often in Morgan Hill, but occasionally it does. The sun, we can guarantee, it's very hot. You don't want to have a gathering area where there isn't some shade. Um, and then the last question I had, it was a a reference to your comment. I think most of you had made it, uh, an entitlement. Okay, could somebody clarify what that means?
That is the CUP.
Oh, that that's what.
County Superbills.
Okay.
Well, that may have been my uh, the the basis for us appearing tonight is when we reviewed the original entitlement that that showed the intent of of the shopping center and the pedestrian plaza in the form of the entitlement. And that's when Ms. Carmen said, you know, you may want to come to the planning commission and ask them about whether or not we, this sort of concept could substantially be consistent with the underlying entitlement. So that's, that's.
And that would be, that would be the PD.
And that would be the public benefit portion of that entitlement is what we're concerned.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Focusing on this evening, but the entitlement for the site is the plan development.
Right, okay. Uh, I think I have a better understanding, and maybe that gets back to then the uh public benefit, the uh, that plaza. It's to, uh, that's the initial concept. I'm sure a lot of things could occur all the way from putting some kind of water or something out there, but to actually have something that's attractive enough that people would want to actually gather there uh versus using it as a shortcut rather than the other sidewalk. Um, something that would make it sort of special. Okay, without, on the other hand, attracting uh all of the students who would gather there at one thirty at night and drink beer. You know, we'd want to discourage that type of thing from going on, but we um anyhow, that was my point.
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Well, I made sure when I read the staff report and I saw the menu, I decided I had to eat before I came here. I is, and uh my team teammates have talked about the plaza. Uh, I would say that the basic plaza concept you have here and the idea of using Raising Canes to activate the center is a very good one. Uh, I I think that um it's probably would be the best plaza around the drive-through in Morgan Hill that that would ever be. If you've gone to the others, there's like nothing. The one thing I would ask you to consider is that, and I'm sure for every one of us here living in Morgan Hill, sometimes you decide not to go to McDonald's or In-N-Out because of the traffic and the 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 tiny parking spaces and the way you have to navigate to get to that actual drive-through. And if you just spent a couple of hours at both the the McDonald's and the In-N-Out, you'll see that many times we've decided not to go there because of how you have to navigate the traffic. So I think that's going to be a key part of allowing people to even, you could have a very good drive-through at a corner, but because the 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 center itself, the re-center itself, doesn't allow you to navigate your cars effectively, you'll decide not to go. So that's something for you to think about. Sometimes we just wouldn't go to Walmart because of that. Um, because and you just have to do some studies and look at what happens at McDonald's, for example, and what happens at In-N-Out here. And you'll see that a lot of people just get turned away because of that that issue. So that would be, but I think it's a fantastic idea.
I think you bring up a great point. I always tell people that we're all kind of retail experts because we're consumers. And all you have to do is think about how you yourself shop, just like you said with your family.
Uh huh.
And I think that's one of the reasons that Canes is, as successful as they are, they 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 think about that and they do a really good job of getting people through there quickly. Um, but you bring up a great point, which is if if we don't design it right, it's not gonna produce the activation that you're talking about. And I have confidence that they can do it.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Lake, if I may, being that we're um born in Louisiana and headquartered in Dallas, all of our uh analysis for circulation is a minimum standard of four two fifty. So four two fifty can make it through the drive-through. That's that's our standard.
What's that? What's that? Uh, I'm I'm not sure what it is.
A four to a big truck.
Oh, okay.
And it was, it sounded like you were driving a big truck around, so.
No, no, it's not a big truck at all. Yeah.
It it's an interesting point, um, that uh what the state has done with commercial um um limitations on parking minimums. And um, and it might, it might be, you might, I'm not saying here, but you might see um developers stop at the teeny tiny parking spaces, which is pretty annoying because they have to get to that minimum and instead go with less than minimum because they don't have to provide them anymore, but provide wider parking spaces.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. And I thought, and I'm just gonna focus on the area of the public space. And by public, in this case, I'm not necessarily saying one of your customers, but the general public. Okay? In size comparison, what are we talking about here? Because I thought I saw something that said we might be a, this might be a little bit smaller.
It there there were no measurements on either plan, and I didn't scale it. But when you lay them on top of each other, one's a little bit smaller than the other. So.
Okay.
I think it's pretty close, though, at least if you eye it. But I think I would argue that it probably continues south on Butterfield further than the original plan. It may not go back as far.
And we have additional seating. Uh, we have a covered canopy with patio dining, which is now also part of the public access as well. So that's an extra at least twelve hundred square feet plus or minus of patio area right adjacent to the building. If you're looking at the building here, there's a Raising Canes sign. Yeah, so right in this picture, page south, you see all the umbrellas there. And then there wrote the black L right along the white building roof. That's actually a covered patio with benches and seating. Um, that is specifically, we usually have for all of our Raising Canes locations. This site has, we kind of exploded that patio and made it more general to the corner itself.
Uh, can you show on this slide where we're talking about? I'm still not quite clear.
Oh, I think I do.
There you go.
Oh. So uh, this black L right here is actually a covered patio. Um, it includes uh bench seating, uh tabletops, accessible seating as well. Um, that I would assume is roughly around a thousand square feet of patio area. Um, and then outside, we have actually umbrella tables as well. So this whole area here is actually outdoor seating on top of what's here um with the pedestrian access. And to touch on your point, um, Commissioner Tonda, is we actually have pergolas on the public frontage here. Kind of help with the sun. I have been in the Bay Area when it's blazing hot, and that is a uh um a refuse for sure. Um, but we do have the covered umbrellas as well for seating and eating. Uh, so we kind of extended our typical prototypical patio. Um, we made it as big as possible, and we kind of extended it to the public right away.
Okay. I I think the big jump here in this is going from one establishment from two or three, right? And the change in sort of the mix that we're thinking about, right? Uh, I can see, I can see how you're doing it. I I'm not quite there, but I think it's doable, right? Uh, in terms of how to do it. Uh, I agree with some of the traffic comments. The cars, as they come through the pickup point, are pointed straight across at uh a housing project, right? Uh, and so we may, you may want to think about that in terms of how you might be able to uh keep that down. I'm assuming you're using highly directed lights. And with the hours you were talking about, I think in the staff report, it was even broader than that. I think it went from nine AM to three thirty in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that, the fact that it's active in those hours is gonna help uh a lot from people going into that plaza area, you know, when nobody's around and potentially causing mischief. But uh, I I think it's possible to get there. But the the big jump for me is understanding how the activation works when we're really talking about a focused customer, a focused retailer right there. Uh, whereas we had multiple that would help and how you draw. Uh, and I agree with some of the shading uh in it. Another part is that was mentioned out more a little bit away from it. Uh, the other thing I think is how do you get out of there to the rest of the shopping center? Do you have to go back out to the public sidewalk that's on the boundary? Or is there a way to get there on this site?
As a pedestrian?
Yes.
Uh, right now, we didn't show any connectivity there, but we were just discussing prior to the meeting. It's as simple as, there's plenty of space for a walkway. I believe the initial PUD site plan had a walkway along the um where right now our drive-through exit is, uh, excuse me, drive-through lanes are. So it would be uh not a huge jump or leap or design, you know, um, move to actually create a pathway either along that frontage there or along this side here, um, connecting to the rest of it. I don't know if there's an image of the rest of the shopping center, but there's a road um page east of here to the right, page right, and then also page north of top. So, okay, there you go. Yeah, so there is a road. Um, initially, there is a road that goes all the way through here. Um, and there is public sidewalks, I believe, in the design. Um, so we can, it's gonna be a sidewalk that we can definitely connect it to the rest of the shopping.
That was part of the idea of the draw, right, is is multiple people. You got a gathering spot there. But you also have some walking access to other thing because not only are the, there's residential projects right directly across from you, kitty corner from you, there's a whole major complex under construction, right? Uh, and so that's another draw or another group of people there. Plus, you've got the whole industrial park, eh, part of which is across the street with uh several large employers, employers within walking distance pretty easily.
And Joe, I think, can we just comment on what you just said? Can you, Jen, can you go back to the the overall um site? That one, that one. So I mean, again, this is just a feedback session, right? And I still think this could be worked out. But this is, the original concept you can see here is, there was two buildings, and I don't know what it really matters, but it was two and up. The whole idea was that that yellow section, there was supposed to be an active pedestrian walkable area, right? And really, what we're suggesting now is it's gonna become, you know, one of the busiest private traffic zones in the city for most of the day. It's gonna be a constant flow of traffic and cars on there, right? Which is completely counter to what we really want it to be. And again, I'm not saying you can't work it out. I'm just saying, that was the idea, and that was supposed to be the benefit. Now it's like a huge traffic study, eighteen hours a day, trying to control the flow of how many cars? Fifteen hundred or how many, how many did you say? Wait?
Fifteen hundred customers.
Fifteen hundred customers. Completely different to me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now let, maybe is a good time to open it up and see if we have a comment from uh any other members of the public rather than the applicant team?
I don't see any hands raised.
No hands raised, nobody here? No hands raised, nobody here? Okay, uh, with that, I'll close the public comment portion and we'll come back.
Uh, can I ask a question, Steph? Sure. So Jen, uh, uh, reading the staff report, it was like, there was a lot of concentration on, and we still see the benefit, right? It was the kind of how what I was reading. What if we don't? You know, what what is the, what are the procedures here? I mean, obviously, we want to support something like this, but we're being asked it as a commission, we're being asked a question. I give you my opinion, which is I don't see the same thing, but. Who's that taking his input and what are the implications of that?
So the applicant will take the comments that they've heard tonight and make a decision on whether or not they will file. As per C U P and the Sigma. It's a significant investment. Um, they're looking at purchasing the property and they're gonna be basing decisions on comments that they hear from the commission. If if they're hearing all negative comments, it's unlikely that they would move forward. But it's really up to the applicant whether or not they would want to apply.
Any other questions from anybody else?
I had a question, Joe.
Yeah.
Uh, this was a question for the developer. I apologize. Your name?
Rod Collins.
Ron?
Rod.
Rod. Okay, uh, Rod, you had started off by pointing out that the commercial market is really tough. And you know, that's, uh, I have a commercial property and I'm very well aware about myself. Uh, and it probably will be. So I'd rather, much rather have a very successful business than a. Vacant plot of land, which is what that could just ultimately become more worse yet to have an inner car wash.
Another one?
Just kind of kidding, because we we were flush with car washes in the city, I I gotta tell you. My question actually had to do with uh another parcel, parcel on your project, and that's the assisted living. Uh, can you just give us the status of that?
Zach, can you help me with it? Do you know what the? Jennifer probably knows better than we do. Well, I can tell you that just, it was originally sold to a group called Artist. And Artist was gonna move forward, then they decided not to move forward. So they sold the parcel to another operator called Tenfold. Who candidly, um, they came to the table after Artist did, and I was really impressed with Tenfold, so I'm kind of glad they. Ended up with it, but um Jennifer can speak to that.
They they've met with the city and we have not received an application yet. Um, but they're very, at least when we met with them, they're very excited about the opportunity to be on this location.
Fantastic. But they've always wanted to be in Morgan Hill. They were very disappointed when they lost out initially. One thing I wanted to add to retail in the area is that, as I said, it's really changed over the last four years. It's very difficult right now to go ground up and make it pencil. Um, with the construction costs the way they are. Uh, these tenants can't afford to pay the rent, so the developers need to make sense of that. And hopefully that's going to change, but it's been very difficult and gotten more difficult recently. Um, and so that's why I think one of the things that we were so excited with Raising Cane's is that over the last four years. The the tenants that are expanding right now and that are successful are the ones that have incorporated a drive through. And there's a lot of restaurants. That previously didn't have drive through, so now incorporated drive through and different pickup strategies, et cetera. And so, um, Commissioner Tanda, to your point, um, we felt like this is one of the best tenants in the market right now that can. Um, it didn't, it doesn't, to Commissioner Downey's um. Part of you, it it it's not exactly how we envisioned it. True. The way that retail has evolved over the last four years, it's something that I think. It's really exciting and is a good long-term solution. And I really appreciate all of your guys' comments. And I guess the one thing I would throw out is, is is there anything we can do to help? With connectivity to the community and to within the center. That would give us ideas on how we can modify that plan. To, you know, make you guys feel more comfortable that you're addressing the needs of the community and and everything else. Because again, I think this is a great user for the city. Um, and you know, one of the things that we found over the last couple of years especially is that developers, the tenants. Cities, we all have to work together to solve a problem that's going on right now with with development. And so anything you guys can do to give us some feedback to help would be really appreciated.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
It's hard for us sometimes to sit up here because my comment, for example, could be taken that I'm, you know, anti. Fast food, for example, right, or Raising Cane's. I'm not. I'm actually the complete opposite, right? I was asked a very specific question as the planning commissioner and the staff report is, do you still see the same benefit by which we approved this in the first place? I don't, you know, my answer is, what you show me now? No, I don't. Is it close and is there a a good attempt made? Yes, right? And could it be solved? Yeah, I think it could, right? You had a comment earlier about someone asked you like, you know, you're coming to this corner, when you go, right? There's not even, we didn't even see a sign of a walkway to walk around it, right? So I'm saying, you know, when you, if you really want to activate a space. And we we had, how many years ago, we had consultants here who talked to us before about, okay, we activate space and what. More modern cities are doing and how they're getting cities revived. And one of the main things they said is you gotta take the traffic out, not bring the traffic in. Right? Take traffic out and people will come back, right? So here, because of the nature of the business, it's such a high-volume business, you've got to isolate the traffic and the people some way, right? Let them come into that space, let them navigate around that space, let someone like Raising Cane's do their business and and their flow of traffic. But still allow for reasonable access, mobility and walkability, right? I think you could, I think you could still make it work. Or maybe, you know. Is this to your, Robert, to your point, is this corner, is it still the right corner to do that type of activation? Maybe you might come back and say, there's another area of the development where we might do that instead. Right, you know, we could still get the benefit there. So I think there's definitely options. And I just want to say before I close that. I'm very pro this is developing the city. I've been watching retail for years, what goes on. We all have to get creative. I want to make it work out too. Right? But what I saw so far, I think it needs a little bit more work.
And 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 I, and I, again, you guys have all thrown out really good suggestions and um. It it sounds like we just need to provide more connectivity, walkability. Um, I liked, I think, what Commissioner Lake was talking about with doing something else a little more with the plaza. There and to, you know, I guess to balance doing a little bit more, but to what Commissioner Mueller said, don't make it so attractive. That you've got an element that's hanging out there, you know, at different hours too. Um, but I don't know if there's just any other feedback you have that if you, you know, if something comes to mind where you said, you know, if you could do this. That would. You know.
Yeah, the things we keep seeing every time uh people do traffic, right? People are very concerned about traffic because we're a small town, so people always raise the concern about traffic. That's what we get from the public. That's that's the top stuff. Have you done a traffic study? The second thing is, as as commissioners have mentioned before, the neighbors. The the projects and the residential that are nearby, lighting and sound, uh, privacy. Those are all concerns that, you know, you should look at that site, see who's close by. How would it affect them? Cars coming at three thirty AM, people hanging out until three thirty AM. How would the community respond to something like that and how would you mitigate those things?
Yeah, yeah, I I think. The fact that you have such a of lo- long hours of operation and that there's people there and you seem to be conscious of. Of what's happening, that will help. Because if it closed earlier in the evening and you had a longer stretch when nobody was there. Maybe it's more inviting. I would attract, I would set it so that it's really attractive to bring people in there. And use your hours when you're there to help. Uh, mitigate what may go on, right? Because you've got a fairly wide range of hours to operate. But really think about what it would take on that corner to help draw people in. Right? Uh, especially a little bit since we know that. The Cock, the Cochran Road piece. Is seeing a fair amount of activity right now on this site, but the rest of it isn't. Never mind the corner that goes to the assisted living, that's sort of its own, but the the corner that the. The corner that was. Part of our previous conversation with you about the 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 corner on the west southwest side. Right, is is what what's gonna happen there? We don't know, right? But what we want to do is not do something on this corner. When we're changing from multiple establishments to one, that prevents us from trying to draw that crowd in. Right, as much as we can. Through it through, and it is the walkable connectivity, right? It's back to the thing of try to get people out of cars, working in their neighborhood right there, right? Uh. I I I think it's doable, right? Yep, I I would really like to 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 sort of work it. Uh, and uh, see how that works, because. Where we were at before pandemic and where we are now is a totally different business. Another part of it is. We spelled out how much was coming through the the things, but how much of it is a DoorDash type operation? Rather than this specific customer coming through. Right? And that part may stay around because it's a significant part of restaurant business these days, I think, is the. The stuff that's ordered online. And just somebody else, a third party comes through and picks it up. You know, and goes through. So the connection to the neighborhood is the, to me, is the real important one. And how do we do it in such a way that that it will attract the people across the street?
Uh, constructive input, um. And we talk about walkability, uh. You you really have to look at how many people really would walk. From their, the comfort of their homes into any shopping center in Morgan Hill and certainly short distance. So there may not be that many people coming from the north, whi- which is where the uh. So the plaza is, it may be coming, it will be coming actually immediately to the uh west. And to the south, where we have five, six hundred departments being built. And if you look at that in your layout, you you you'll want to give some consideration on how do I. Make it as convenient and safe as possible for people to come from the south and get up into my establishment, which is a reasonable walk. That probably people would do that. And it may be looking at, you know, how how that would occur. Uh, for the whole shopping center, but certainly uh for uh Raising Cane. And the second thing I I had already mentioned is to, when you do come in with your uh. At that point on your site plan or your plan, uh, for the C U P is to use strategically placed landscaping. And not only to enhance the attractiveness of it, but to also do some of the screening that we had talked about for the residents to the. Immediately to the west.
Is that? Could we get, hopefully get the kind of feedback you were looking for?
Mr. Chair, this has been great. Um, we. Will continue to um keep our ears open and eyes open as we go through this process uh with city, all the different departments. Um, and now know your names and I can probably find you online, so I can reach out as well.
Bring some chicken.
Have um, we have a series of good ideas, great feedback and a challenge. And we will take all those into consideration and we really appreciate also the the uh that you've. Taken us uh into a little bit more of a workshop session, so that's that's really refreshing, quite honestly, so we appreciate that.
Thanks. Yeah, no, thank, thank you very much, all of you, and thank you to Jennifer, because Jennifer's been a a champ the whole time, so we'll. We tool and work it, work through some ideas with her, so that when we come back, we have something that you guys can say, oh, they hurt us. They hurt us. I mean, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, uh, we have no other agenda items other than I believe the director's report.
Director's report. So um, a topic that has come up from a. Plan commissioner about changing our hours of meeting times from seven to six, our start time. That question came up at the council goal setting and it will be discussed at tomorrow's night's meeting. Um, it is item seven on the agenda. It's part of an overall um. Review and look at council policies and um changing the date of goal setting workshops and the time established for. Um, city council public meetings. So dependent on where that conversation goes, um, that may be something that the commission. Um, might want to talk about or schedule for a discussion at a later date. Um, but I did want to let folks know who are interested in that, that it did come up at city council.
So the the meeting, the city council meeting is discussing the.
Starting at six PM instead of seven.
Of this meeting or the council meeting?
The council, council meetings.
So they're not discussing the commission meeting?
No, but planning commission tends to follow. And and when that first came up, we. Didn't quite want to have that discussion because we knew it might come up at council. And so. We'll see where council ends up going with that conversation. I think there's different views uh from different council members. Um, so. If you tune in.
Remind some of us to let it work, right?
Absolutely. And I know that 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 may be a conversation and comments that the public will have as well. Um, but I did want to let you all know that it is coming up in case you wanted to listen in. Um. Other than tonight, um, we have a lot of things getting started, but nothing ready for you. We do have certain. Um, applications that we do have definitive dates on in March. Um, not sure if we will have a meeting. The next meeting, I will let you know as soon as we know. Um, I also did want to point out the Planning Commissioners Academy at the end of March. We have two commissioners who are attending. Um, if you are interested, I forwarded out the agenda. Please let me know, we'll get you registered and and ready to go to that. It's in Garden Globe in Southern California.
Yeah, so Jennifer, I would be interested, but since I'm still working, um, if there are. Things on the weekend, I would be really interested.
Okay, it it's it's not, it's a week.
I saw that's.
The training on. Okay. And and if we do find um opportunities for remote training, I'll definitely let you all know as well.
Good, yeah, thank you.
And Jennifer, what is the status of our housing element?
Our housing element was adopted by the city council at the July twenty fifth, January twenty fifth council meeting. And it was sent in, so it's under its second review. So we are amongst a number of cities who did adopt before the January thirty fourth deadline. Um, and we are not subject to builder's remedy because of that, um, which is great. And we're seeing, if you watch the news articles, um, you're seeing lots of mentions of that in different communities who are. Um, dealing with those types of issues now.
Some housing advocate organizations are suing people. In Santa Clara County and other Bay Area counties. They're actually taking them to court for not having a housing element that's adopted.
But we, so cities were required to submit by January thirty first, not necessarily be complete. Not necessarily have approval, but at least start that process. And there were a number of cities who did not. And those are the cities that, some cities are being sued for that, some are being sued for other reasons, like. They adopted or they felt their plan was not compliant. And there's a lot of different reasons.
Well, I uh, I read, I think it was in San Jose Mercury of an individual in the. Uh, is the city of Los.
Los Altos Hills.
Yeah, where he's uh invoked the developer remedy.
The builder's remedy, correct.
Okay, and as I was explaining that to my wife, I said, uh, there is that option that's yet to be fully, I think legally tested. Where anybody can declare that they're going to reuse their lot, break down their home and put up. Uh, whatever the land use will allow, which I guess would be, in his case, on a lot. In Los Altos, a twenty unit apartment?
I'm I'm not sure he was gonna do that. There were two different options that he had floated.
But could that occur in Morgan Hill?
Not right, because we adopted and were, we submitted prior to January thirty first and we adopted.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
There's actually a really interesting map that E M B Law put together of the entire Bay Area. Of what cities are where and we're in the orange, which is the color we want to be. Um, it says that builder's remedy is, we're not subject to builder's remedy because we are at a certain point. People could test that. Um, and then it would be in Cynthia's hands and Ron's hands. We're hoping that we get sign off on this next review. Um, and if we don't, we will make whatever changes are necessary, take it back. And once we do get that letter from H C D. We will be coming back through, showing everyone what changes um state required for compliance and having it re-adopted by council. And then we will be done. For at least eight years.
I'm saying, never done, huh?
At least with the housing element, not all the projects. At least with the housing element, not all the projects, so. And then, um, I don't know if any of you have heard, um, there is a new law. That has been floated by Senator Weiner, that would extend S B thirty five in perpetuity and make it permanent in the government code. There's currently sunset clause on that law. We did expect an extension, um, did not expect a permanent. Um, amendment. So that's S B seven, or no, S B four twenty three. Um, and we'll keep an eye on it and see what goes.
Does that mean, Jennifer, if that were to pass and ultimately stay that uh, the R D C S is pretty much then sunset completely?
Well, the R D C S was sunsetted by S B three thirty and that was extended out another. Um, five years, so.
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
Correct, but I'm saying that the legislation that you're referring to would supplant uh, the current provision.
Not necessarily. It it's, it's, it's a special law. It has to have affordable housing. And it's completely ministered. We can't require any permit, any C Q for it. So it's a very intense um, piece of legislation. If we're done with our arena and get to a certain point in progress on our arena, we're not subject to it. And so that is the goal of getting there. So we're protecting the city by following the rules and getting out of the. The realm of implementing laws, so.
Uh, could I ask a question about uh, an existing facility in Morgan Hill that seems to be vacant? That's the Shoe Palace uh, storage area?
Shoe Palace is operational. Um, and I I don't know if our economic development team would like to say anything about specifics.
Drop there, but.
I know that they've toured the building. I have not, so. Operational.
But it, so it is being used?
No, they're in the new building. Shoe Palace is in the new building. And the original building, which was the old Abbott Labs building, is being through a major renovation and is owned by another company now.
Well, uh, the one I'm referring to is the one that you see on the freeway.
Yeah.
And it, it appears to be completely vacant.
Yeah.
It is not vacant. So Commissioner Tanda, that is uh, seven four five Jarvis. That is the new headquarters for Shoe Palace and J D Sports for uh, the West Coast. Um, that warehouse facility and distribution facility is operational. Um, they are only using a few truck dock doors a day. They don't have nearly as many truck trips as I think everybody was anticipating. So they actually bring a truck in, stage it at the back dock door, load and unload. Um, I haven't been to the warehouse in several months, so I haven't seen if they've filled it up more, but they've slowly but surely been putting in additional racking and warehousing and and equipment. Um, it's a beautiful facility inside. We're actually, inside the headquarters, there is a model J D Sports. Retail store and a model Shoe Palace uh, retail store that you'd actually find in the mall. And they actually bring their associates, their employees into those facilities, train them and test out marketing. I mean, it's, you literally think you're walking into the mall and into a retail store, so they use those to kind of test their um. Their approaches in in retail, but it's fairly operational. The old facility at seven five five Jarvis uh, was purchased. It was purchased by Ridge Capital Partners. They have um, gone in and made some tenant improvements, kind of got it back to its original advanced manufacturing bones. And they are actively leasing that space. I believe it's just over two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So it's a big space and they're looking to identify an advanced manufacturer, uh, some type of R and D innovation technology uh, user.
Wow. You know, maybe I'm just missing the the news that may be coming out of the city Morgan Hill, but it uh, may be a good idea to promote. That those facilities are up occupied and not really having any negative impact that was otherwise speculated by. Uh, some individuals in the community. Hey, I thought they were just vacant, but that's, that's great news.
Fully active.
With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.